Good evening and welcome to the City Council Meeting of the City of Lenore for Tuesday, April the 6th, 2021. We welcome you here this evening as we get ready to, as we call the meeting to order and we get ready to do our moment of silence and our pledge of allegiance. I will first like to call a roll of letting, to let you know who is with us and who we have on the virtual meetings tonight. And I'll start with those here in the room. Councilmember Jonathan Beal, Councilmember Ike Perkins, Councilmember Ralph Presswood, Councilmember Ben Willis, myself as a mayor, City Attorney TJ Rohr is with us, City Manager Scott Hildebrand, our Communications Director Joshua Harris, and our Police Chief Brent Phelps are here in the room with us. And I'll now call the role of those that are on with us on the virtual. I'll start out Chrissy Thomas, our Mayor Pro Tem. Chrissy was out of town, I'm not sure if she's back. Councilmember Todd Perdue.
Yes, I'm here.
Welcome Todd. Councilmember David Stevens. Okay, let's see David here. Our City Cork Shirley Cannon. All right, and our staff that was with us, our Finance Director Donna Bean.
Here.
Thank you. Our Fire Chief Ken Hare.
I'm here.
Economic Development Main Street Director Kaylin Horn.
I'm here.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Director Kenny Story.
I'm here.
Our Public Utilities Director Radford Thomas.
I'm here.
Thank you. Our Planning Director Ginny Wheelock.
I'm here.
Thank you. And Public Works Director Jared Wright.
I'm here.
Thank you. Okay. I'll leave anybody out. We do have a few guests here in the room and we'll be introducing them in just a few minutes, so thank you. Right now, we'll please go to a time of, a moment of silence and we'll ask you during that to remain standing for our pledge of allegiance. As we go to that time, would you please keep our, our state and our country in your thoughts and prayers as we continue to move forward in our, this pandemic time? And please pray for those who are moving forward to help us in every way they can. Thank you. Please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First order tonight, we do have a special recognition. I'm going to come down to the podium to do that. And I'm going to ask our Commissioner, McCallough County Commissioner Donnie Potter, if he will join me tonight as we, tonight we're going to, we're doing a proclamation to recognize our problem that we have with littering in our community. And tonight, we are doing a resolution together as the city and the county to encourage residents to help keep Lenore and Caldwell County litter free. And I'm going to read this proclamation and then I'm going to present it to Commissioner Potter. Commissioner Potter has been leading a great effort in our county and we certainly appreciate what you've been doing and as we lead this, trying to, to help clean up our community. And it's had some, a lot of issues lately and we want to continue to move forward the best way we can to keep our community as beautiful and, and take care of it to the best we can. And we're encouraging all of our, our citizens and our residents to do the same thing. And we'll be doing that through a litter sweep that'll be, take place over March 10th through Mar, excuse me, not March, April 10th through April 24th of 2021. So let me read this proclamation. Whereas City of Lenore residents are blessed to live in the beautiful foothills of the Blue Ridge Mountains in western North Carolina, and the natural beauty of our land is a source of pride for residents and an attraction for tourists and new businesses. And whereas littering is against the law and cleaning litter from North Carolina's road sides costs taxpayers millions of dollars each year. And whereas litter is more prevalent than ever along our road sides and the state and, and the state and volunteers have collected more than 2 million pounds of roadside litter in North Carolina since January the 1st of 2021. And whereas seeing litter along our road sides is embarrassing to our residents who love Lenore and Caldwell County and are off putting to citizens, off putting to citizens and new visitors. And whereas we can help keep Lenore litter free by teaching our children and other young people not to litter, covering truck and trailer beds when transporting trash, carrying and using a litter bag in our vehicle and reporting litter bugs when we see them to the North Carolina Department of Transportation SWAT a litter bug program. And whereas the North Carolina 2021 Spring Litter Sweep will take place April 10th through the 24th of 2021. And whereas City of Lenore staff with the full support of the City Council will pick up litter in Lenore Wednesday, April 14th, 2021 during the annual City of Lenore Employee Spring Litter Sweep Day. And whereas the City of Lenore supports Caldwell County's first annual A Clean Caldwell Roadside Litter Pickup Day scheduled for April 17th, 2021. Now therefore being resolved that I as Mayor and on behalf of the City of Lenore City Council encourage all residences, businesses, civic groups, churches, and schools to help pick up litter in Lenore and Caldwell County during the 2021 Spring Litter Sweep while following all roadside safety and state health, safety guidelines. And be it further resolved, City Council of the City of Lenore encourages all residents to take pride in our community and keep Lenore litter free all year long. This the 6th day of April, 2021. Potter, thank you very much. We appreciate that. And I'll let you, if you'd like to make some comments, please do.
Fantastic.
Yes, sir.
Like I said earlier, it's a little bit odd to be on this side of the, of the desk there because I've, you know, working as a county commissioner, I don't get a chance to see this side. And I want to take the opportunity to say, to say thank you for having me. And I truly appreciate the support that the mayor and the city's council has given us for the Clean Caldwell Day and the Litter Sweep that DOT puts on every spring. As he said, it's a, it's a serious problem across, not just our county, but across the state of North Carolina. And I think we have to do our part and I think this is just the beginning. You guys have been doing this, I think, for a couple of years on your side from a city standpoint. It's the first time that the county has done anything and it was something that I took a passion in and I wanted to make sure that we do our part. And I do appreciate you, appreciate each one of you and support of this resolution. And we'll do everything we can to keep this county clean. And I encourage anybody that's interested to, to participate in the county's Clean Caldwell Day, to go to the county website, that's CaldwellCountyNC.org, and you can register with your group there and tell us how many people you're going to have. And that will be on the 17th, which is next Saturday, not this Saturday, but the following Saturday. So again, thank you for your support and I appreciate everything you do.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Did you get a picture?
I want to get a picture somewhere I can see the resolution.
I'm going to stand right up there with the mayor. Fisher.
That looks kind of nice, guys.
Council, why don't you come in behind us right here. On behalf of the City Council, we'd like to present a proclamation to our Chief of Police, Chief Brent Phelps, proclaiming the week of April the 11th through the 17th as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the City of Lenore. And Chief is with me here. We'll present this proclamation, Chief, at this time. This is for National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, April the 11th through the 17th, 2021. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. Whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. Whereas the safety of our first responders is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Lenore Communications Center. Whereas professional telecommunicators are not as visible as the men and women who arrive at the scene of the emergency, but they are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. Whereas professional telecommunicators are the single vital link for our first responders by monitoring their activities by radio and mobile, providing accurate up-to-date information and ensuring their safety. Whereas each telecommunicator has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Therefore being resolved that I as Mayor of the City of Lenore and on behalf of the Lenore City Council do hereby proclaim and declare the week of April the 11th through the 17th, 2021 to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Lenore in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Witness this day, the 6th day of April, 2021. Chief, thank you. We appreciate all that you do as being a part of this. I present that to you and I'll let you, if you will, make some comments.
Counsel, thank you for the recognition for our telecommunicators. As, as the proclamation read, they do a job that is behind the scenes. They're not visible to our community and, but they are a vital part of providing that public safety for, for us here in Lenore and, and then the telecommunicators that the county has as well for EMS, fire, and other law enforcement. It, we, the job could not be done without them and they don't get enough recognition on a daily basis for the job they do because it is stressful at, at times. And we're very fortunate to have the staff that we do. So thank you for, for the recognition.
You're welcome. Let's get a picture with you, can? Counsel? One, two, three, cheese.
I'm good, thank you. Absolutely quick, definitely good.
All right, thank you for those special recognitions. We certainly appreciate Commissioner Potter being with us this evening and for the work he's doing toward the litter in our community. And we're all got to do this together, so we appreciate someone taking a, a lead on that. And of course, to honor our telecommunicators who, without them, if we couldn't get that information out, we wouldn't know what was going on at all. So now it's time, we'll move on. Our Chief of Police Brent Phelps will present the department's annual report for 2020 to the council tonight. And Chief Phelps, welcome back.
Thank you. Let's get a picture. Let's get a picture. I ain't going to take that off. Counsel, Mayor, thank you for allowing me to be here. Last year, we did not do a public presentation for our annual report. We were in the throes of figuring out the pandemic and so we didn't get to do this last year, so thank you for the opportunity to, to come and present. I'm not going to bore you by death by PowerPoint. You've got in your packet the full annual report. That report is posted online at the very end. I'll ask for questions, but at any point as you read through and look over that, our report, if you have questions, please give me, one of the captains, one of the leaders in the department a call and we'll be more than happy to, to talk through that. Here is where you can find the full, the full report online for the public. Just some, some real quick numbers in, going through. These are numbers that are posted on our website that we try to put out there for the public to see just, and these are just 2020 numbers. Our communications center has received over 39,000 phone calls, over 4,600, almost 4,700 911 calls. Those come through the county's 911 center to us. The telecommunicators processed over 39,000 CAD calls. So that room is a very busy room as, as we have already discussed. Our Patrol Division had over 22,000 police service calls and that is a wide variety of different calls. We had over 10,000 special checks, house checks, resident checks, and those are checks that either we put on somebody's residence, there's, there's something that we feel like we need to go and, and check that residence, give additional attention. We may as a supervisor put it on that list. And there's also a process through our website where if residents are out of town, they can get their house, put on a house check for a certain number of days and, and we will go by and check that property while our, our folks are working. So we had over 10,000 of those. Over 691 call follow-ups just from our Patrol Division. Our Investigations Division, over 1,900 criminal cases came through. 234 nuisance cases. I'll talk about nuisance in just a little bit, but we have one nuisance investigator that, that is his full-time job and, and it's a busy job. They stay busy. We have more than one person can do. And then in evidence, there's over almost 45,000 pieces of evidence. A lot of that evidence is digital now, but there is still a lot of pieces that, that we track and keep up with and that is a, a full-time, a full-time job and an important job. Other activity, some of our criminal charges totaled our felony and misdemeanor charges over 2,900, had over 250 drug charges, over 82 different alcohol violations. Traffic gets a lot of attention for us. We had over 1,000 crashes this past year. That was slightly down from the year before and we had zero fatalities this year. We were, we were very fortunate there. We only had one in 2019. One is too many, but thankfully last year we, we had none. Over 4,200 vehicle stops and over 3,000 citations and then 1,300 warning citations. Our Investigations Division, 526,000 value in recovered stolen property. There are vehicles in that. Those numbers fluctuate depending on the item stolen. Sometimes, I remember one year we had a, a large piece of equipment from Valley Rentals that was stolen and that piece of equipment was valued at 200,000 just as of it. So, you know, sometimes you, you can have a huge spike from year to year with, with some of those numbers. The illegal narcotics, that's a street value of illegal narcotics that we were involved in that was seized and then strictly cash that was seized through, through our Investigations Division. Some other stats for the department. Last year, we had 51 overdoses. In 2019, we had, last year we had 50, in 2019, we had 51. So there was a slight reduction there, but pretty much consistent. We used Narcan 22, 22 times this past year and we're fortunate enough to, to save 22 individuals that were not breathing when officers got on scene. In 19, there were, there were 18 lives that officers were, were saved, were able to save. And just those seconds in administering that drug is huge for the EMS workers when they get on scene because our officers typically are first on scene and it makes a huge difference in being able to administer that for, for those individuals. It's sad that we have to deal with that as officers, but I am proud of the fact that there's 22 people that are walking around today because our officers were able to administer that before EMS got there. 95 involuntary commitments. That number fluctuates every year, but it typically runs between 90 and 100, so it's fairly consistent. We had 22 backgrounds that we performed, 11 polygraphs. We had 24 use of force incidents and then 238 Crime Stoppers tips. In, in the use of force incidents, one of, you will see it in the annual report. There's a note at the bottom on page 12 where that information is at. The interactions with the public that we can document, we have over 39,000 interactions that we can document. That's calls we go to, reports we take, off-duty work with any type of interaction that, that we can document. We can document 39,000. We know there's well more than that. You know, an example of that is, you know, we can document when six officers work a hybrid in high school football game, there are six officers at that event. Well, how many different citizen interactions do they have while they're at that event? So some of that is literally impossible for us to track, but we can track 39,000 interactions with the public. And 24 times we had to use use of force out of those 39,000. That's less than 24 one thousandths of a percent of those interactions resulted in, in force. And so we're, we're proud of that number. We're proud of our officers' professional ability to interact with, with the public. We, we have a motto at the police department. Every new officer that comes to the department, I tell them this at some point when I sit down with them, it's on the back of the coin that you guys got that, that we redesigned. But, but I tell officers, I, I want you to treat people that you're interacting with like you want your family treated. You know, I, I will take some mouth and some lip from people, but you know, don't, don't talk bad to my wife, don't, don't talk bad to my kids. And if we're treating people like we would want our own family treated, we're, we're going to be okay as long as they'll let us. Sometimes that's hard, but I think those numbers show that our officers are working hard in, in that area. Other things, just to be aware of, to highlight, we had over 7,100 hours of training last year and, and that's a reduction from years past. Typically, we have around 10,000 hours on a yearly basis. In April, face-to-face training stopped. And so the bulk of that is online training, web training, Zoom training, webinars, things like that. And so that's why there was a, a reduction there, but you'll hear me talk in a few minutes, but we had to, you know, look at how we operated and, and how we did business as things changed last year. We, in July, every officer in the department went through some additional de-escalation training. We felt like with everything going on in our country and community that that was important. The majority of our officers had had de-escalation training in the past, but we felt like that was an important piece for, to go back over. So every officer received some additional de-escalation training and that is in the fabric of our, of our work. Every interaction, the bulk of the interactions that our officers have, our officers should be and are in that process of de-escalation incidents to where we don't have to use force, we don't have to, you know, take things in a certain direction. And I, and I think the, those numbers we talked about earlier help show that. In September, we sent two of our sergeants to fair and impartial police training, train the trainer. They were certified in, in that. And in the fall, as we hired officers on, they did eight hours worth of training for new officers that came on. And you'll see next year, some specific numbers, but we just finished in March, every officer in the department went through an eight-hour block of fair and impartial policing training in-house that our instructors used the material that they got and went through. And that's close to 500 hours in and of itself of just that topic. I, myself and the manager started taking some classes through Lenore Ryan University's Equity and Diversity Institute in the fall, in September. And in, at the end of March, I completed that program and got, completed the Equity Leadership Certificate through Lenore Ryan University. And as, as of right now, the, the program just started last summer, but as of right now, Mr. Hildebrand was one of the first managers to attend the classes and I, I am the first chief to complete the program in the state through Lenore Ryan University. And so we, we feel like that's important, not, not to brag on us, but just to show that, you know, as, as a city and as an agency, we value those concepts and, and are working to, you know, spread that through, through the organization. Other things to highlight, our two Canines that we purchased in the fall of 2019 completed their certifications this past year. K9 Major and K9 Wise, that's how that's pronounced. I had to be told or I would not have come up with that on my own. But those, those Canines are doing well with their new handlers. The nuisance cases, that gets a lot of attention. That's a very visible thing that, you know, we're involved in as a police department. And out of those 234 cases, 116 of those owners abated, abated those issues. The city did abate 12, 12 of those cases. We, we spent every penny that Ms. Donna gave us, as is the police department in that line item, toward, toward cleaning up some areas. And we, we'll continue to, to work in that, in that direction. But that is, it seemed like, and I'll talk about it in a minute, but it seemed like in the summer, the manager, the mayor, you counsel, myself, I think we were just getting bombarded with calls from citizens. People were at home, people were in the residence. People, you know, were not going out and going about their normal activities and so things that may not have warranted or, or rose to the level of a call to a council member or, or the police chief, it seemed like back in the summer and in the fall it did. But, so we did look into a, a lot of those, but you know, we, we can also see the, the difference that, that enforcement and that, that activity makes in neighborhoods. Sometimes it's a slow process and, and residents at times want that sped up, but it's slow, it is slow for, for a reason. It's slow on purpose. It's set up so if the city or the police department is contacted today, you know, we can't just go in tomorrow and tear somebody's property down. It, it's that way, so it gives people, there's timetables in law to, to give owners the ability to, to abate it and clean it up themselves. And then if those don't happen, then it does give us the ability to step in. So, but that, that does keep us busy and Officer Detective Hartley busy, that's for sure. Few more accomplishments, we, we went through some of our high liability policies. That's an important thing for, for agencies to continue to, to be reviewing those. We updated our use of force policy, our search and seizure policy, our firearms policy, our body worn cameras policy and our personal appearance policy. And I believe it was body worn cameras and use of force. Our city attorney reviewed those as well as part of that process and some things we were changing. And so we updated those. And then some other things that we updated with the department, some of these were in, in the priorities set by council the year before. We put on a new roof. We resurfaced a section of the parking lot. We purchased the new ice machines, some new copiers. The investigators got 10 Surface Pros to be able to allow them to do the job that they need to do remotely and on crime scenes. And then we're not quite there yet, but we are almost to the place for a new patrol car design and we had there yet, but we are almost to the place for a new patrol car design, and we had to look at changing the color, because the blue had to go away, because manufacturers were not going to continue to supply the blue, and we, I personally didn't like that, because the blue is kinda, it's kinda been us, it's kinda been Lenoraun's staple, but we've, we have selected a, a new color, and we've sent out several designs, we've had staff vote on it, we've got one selected, the designer is coming back to the department to, us work on tweaking some colors on Friday, and, and so, we'll, when we pull all that together, you'll, you'll begin to see that in, in some coming, coming months.
What color is it?
It's silver. You, you pretty much had to pick one of the five basic colors to be able to guarantee that down the road, manufacturers would be able to continue to supply that color. Red, white, black, silver, and there, I think maybe an off-silver.
Anything but green.
But, yeah, so, but we, we ended up, years ago, our cars were gray, back before I was at the police department, and so, we thought that a little bit of, you know, looking back in, in some of tradition, but silver hopefully won't put down the road the department in the place where we are now, where we, we can't get the color of, of our cars, and so...
It's got some blue on it somewhere?
There, there, there's gonna be some blue, yes, yeah, yeah, there, there will be, so, yeah, so we...
Do you have a question, Doc?
I was just gonna clarify, if you were talking about the body paint color.
Yes, yes, the, 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 the paint on the car will be silver, and that, there was a lot of gnashing of teeth in making that decision, because the bulk of us that have been there a while liked, liked our blue cars, but it, the manufacturer said, the year before, when we got the three Dodge trucks, they said, in the state, there was three of those trucks in a police package, and all three of them came to Lenoraun PD, and they said, at some point, y'all are not gonna be able to get these colors anymore, and, and they had actually, Dodge had actually stopped producing that color. Chevrolet didn't have a color, Ford was the only one, and, and their prices have went up, and so, so we knew at some point this day would come, so we, we had to make that decision. So, when, when we get closer to a design, we, we will unveil it to council and, and the public.
I think silver would be cool.
I, 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 I think it'll look good, I, I, I think folks will be proud of it. To wrap up, a few things, you know, 2020 was unlike any year I had ever experienced in law enforcement. In my close to twenty-five years, several other things going on, obviously, at the end of May, when Mr. Floyd died in the incident in Minneapolis, that sparked, and that had reaches across our nation, and we were very fortunate, we feel like as an agency, we did a lot of things the right way, but we also live in a very good community, where we were able to work together through those protests, and by about midweek, Ms. Kara with the news topic asked me, we were standing on the street, and she said, how come the protest here feel like a backyard barbecue, and the stuff we're seeing on TV is way different? I said, I don't know that I have an answer to that, but I'm glad it feels that way, and, and so, you know, it, it was, there was a lot of work for a week when we had the week of protests, but it, we're very fortunate, and, and we'll continue to work with our community for those relationships. The, the other part of that that made some of the protests hard was the pandemic, and we were trying, as you can see, the Officer Sergeant Bumgarner there with his mask on, we were trying to figure out how we interact with the public, we were trying to figure out how we interact with ourselves safely, and how we do that, I never thought I'd be making decisions on how do we keep our officers safe from other officers inside our own building. You know, the building is always kinda, you know, if you're in the building, you're, you're safe, and, you know, we were having to figure out, okay, we, we don't need to be in groups, we don't need to have, you know, twenty of us downstairs in the training room doing a supervisor's meeting, and so, it, it, there, there were a lot of challenges. As executive orders came out, and it's like I was on speed dial to multiple chiefs in the area, and, you know, how, how do you interpret this executive order, and what does this mean, and what, you know, and, and folks from businesses would call, and I'd talk to them, and people from the public would call, and what does this mean, and, and so, there were a lot, lot to work, a lot of conversations to work through in, in trying to follow the executive orders and be safe for ourselves and for our officers. You know, one of my concerns was I could have taken a stance as a chief that, you know, if I catch you not wearing your mask, you're gonna be written up or fired, or, you know, I, I could drive it home to the officers that that's top priority. Well, in my mind, the problem with that is the things they're interacting with in some of those moments, that may not be top priority. I don't want a young officer thinking so much about the chief's going, you know, discipline me or fire me, and I get out of the car, and I'm worried about putting my mask on, and I'm not thinking, and I step out into traffic and get hit by a car, or I walk up on a vehicle thinking about putting my mask on initially, and, you know, I'm putting myself in a bad officer's safety position. And so, we tried to find that balance as leadership of, you know, encouraging them, when it is safe, put your mask on to protect yourself and the public, but, but that took some work, and I know there, there were a few times I took a call or two where somebody saw somebody, an officer, you know, without a mask on in the public, and, you know, we, we worked through some of those, but it, it did create some challenges, but I feel like we, we worked real hard on, on trying to find that middle road for our officers for the community, and, and try to do that the right way. Coming up, many of you are aware, we, we had the presentation, our CRO Officer Scott Knup retired back in February. One of the things we're starting to focus on at the department is the future. We've got one sergeant getting ready to retire in May, we may have another sergeant this year that's gonna retire, and in the next five years, there's gonna be quite a, a large number of supervisors and leadership that'll be retiring, and so, from my standpoint, to prepare those individuals and the police department for our community, we've got to be focusing on those people that will be here as other people begin to retire, and making sure that we're preparing them, that we're educating them, and we're putting them in positions where they can learn and develop for themselves and, and, and for the department, and so, you know, focusing on, on leadership training and, and just experience. Last year, it didn't get a lot of attention with everything we had going on, but July first, I moved all three captains, switched them from the divisions they had been in for a while, and me and Mr. Hiddlebrand had talked before that happened, but a big part of that was the captains needed experience in other divisions, there was no issues, they were doing a great job in the divisions, they were, but for down the road, they needed experience in other, other divisions. You know, I, I was blessed to be a supervisor in every division at the department, and I saw where down the road that helped me a lot, see the big picture and have an understanding, you know, because going and answering calls is one thing, but ordering patrol cars and ammo and that stuff is, is something else, and there's a business side and an investigation side and a patrol side, and so, trying to help develop the people we have for, for the future. For anybody in the public, this is our, you've seen this on our calendars, this is our recruitment photo, you know, we're always looking for good folks, and we don't have a lot of openings, we got several in, in training right now, we're trying to get out of training, but we, we're always looking for good people, and so, that's, we can, city council can, can buy us fifteen cars a year and all the equipment we need, but if we don't have good people answering calls and interacting, that's, that's the key, so. Any questions that Mayor Council have?
Before you go back and take questions, I just want to go back and think and recognize Chief Phelps for taking that course at Lenoraun University. When they contacted me about the, the course, we talked about it, and he jumped at the chance to take it, I didn't have to mandate anything, and so, I just want to say I appreciate that because it took a lot of leadership to do that.
And I, it, I grew as a person and as a leader in the course, there, there were a few, especially in September, you know, we, we were still at a very hostile for law enforcement place in our country, and, you know, there were people in these classes that were not just here, I mean, there was people from New York and people from different places, and, and there were a few tough conversations, a, a couple instructors helped navigate some of those conversations between me and an individual or two, but, you know, I, I feel like that's, that's where we grow, that's where we learn, and we, we need those type of environments. Last year made it hard, because we couldn't go out and sit down with our community and, and talk about, you know, what, you know, when, when we had the protests, and I would talk on the street when we were out, and, you know, I'd ask, you know, what, when you say you won't change, what, what does that change look like? So, how do I know whether we've hit the mark or not? And, you know, we've got to be willing to listen and, and hear, and then, you know, and have that open communication and back and forth, and so, the, the manager did reach out, and I, I appreciate you pointing me in that direction, and it, it, it was a good program.
Chief, I'd like to make one comment, and maybe you can share this to the lady that asked you the question, why does ours not look like some of the other protests? And from my observance is that we have leadership in our police department, we have the leaders that will not tolerate anything other than the standards that have been set for the guys. And as I began thinking about what I was gonna say, I wrote this little cliche down, we are, or our PD is to protect and serve, not to seek and destroy.
I, I agree with that.
So, I think that would be a good response to her.
I, I'll, I'll, I'll share that the next time we talk. You know, one of the things with our community on that Sunday night, when, when I got a call and realized, okay, here in a couple, here in about two hours, we're gonna have a protest, you know, I knew as a chief that I needed somebody to help have some initial conversations with the group that showed up, and, and I reached, I reached out to a local pastor that I have a relationship with, that I know, and I respect him, and he respects me, and, and I called him and, you know, and, and asked him, I said, will you help me have some of those initial conversations? Because we're gonna allow the protests, but, but there are some guidelines, and, and there's some things we're not gonna allow, and, and I want all of us to be on the same page so we can work through this together, and, you know, Pastor Wilfong, he said, absolutely. He said, I'll be there, what time do you want me there? And he showed up, and, and then there began to be other people from the community that came, and it was very obvious early on that it was a partnership between us and the community in those protests, and so, he, I'm, I'm not gonna lie to you, the very first night, I was the only officer on the street in, on Sunday night, and, and that was intentional, because I didn't want a big line of officers and, and that being an attention point for our community, and, you know, I felt like there, there may, you know, they may, they may not be as likely to punch the police chief if I'm the one standing there, than, if it's just an officer they don't know, and, and so, I had some very hard conversations that first night. There was an individual that showed up in the crowd armed, and I, I knew that the officers inside the building were, were, were in the process of getting worked up, and, you know, I asked Pastor Wilfong, I said, do you know that individual? And he said, yeah. I said, I said, I need him to put that weapon up. I said, because there's gonna be some officers come out in a few minutes, and they're gonna be uptight, and their adrenaline's gonna be flowing, and, you know, we, we're trying to keep this calm, and, you know, and he said, I'll go tell him, and I said, I'm not asking you to tell him, I'm just asking if you know him. He said, I'll be right back, and he walked over and, and asked the gentleman, the chief would like for you to put that weapon in your car, and the guy said, sure, put it up, and then waved and said, thank you. And so, we were able to bridge some of those things by working together, and, and so, it, it was a partnership, and, and I am proud of how we interacted through the protest and, and navigated that, because we are blessed, we have a good, we have a good community. So, I, I won't ramble too much more, because I, I can tell stories about that week for a while, but any other questions about anything?
I, I had just one, and I, to, to kind of piggyback off of what Councilmember Perkins said about the equi, I, I think when, when we were doing our budget retreat, we've had several of those, one of the top priorities, as you are aware, that the public may not be, was to create an equitable city atmosphere, equitable not only internally, but to spread it out, and so, I think this is to show, I think, the leadership both in the room with, with you and Scott and Mr. Hiddlebrand and what you guys are doing, and I can't wait to see what you've learned, and when you pass it down, what that's gonna be, you know, tomorrow, next year, five years down the road, because it's gonna set the stage, I think, for these new guys you're gonna be hiring, these new leaders you're training, so I, I think it, it makes me feel good about where, where we're headed. Back to the annual report, you know, it was, it was hard for me to see what, to compare apples, because I wanted to see like nineteen and twenty.
Right.
Twenty's such a weird year, so, with, with, with all that being said, what, when you were putting this together?
Yeah.
What was like, you were like, man, what's, that stood out like a sore thumb, what, what, did anything stand out to you that just totally makes it, and you're like, that's a COVID thing?
There was a, there was a reduction, and we talked about, when we were putting numbers together, we talked about, do we do a comparison? One, nineteen, if you'll remember, nineteen was the first full year where we had switched over to NIBbers.
Yeah.
So, that was the first year under this new reporting system. Well, then, twenty was, you know, off the chart, different, and so, we felt like, and actually, the decision I made was, let's not compare nineteen and twenty, let's wait till we have twenty-one, and then we'll start comparing, because we'll have three years to compare the new reporting system by, but we'll still have to take into consideration twenty kind of being...
Sure.
Because there was a reduction, our traffic accidents were about the same, our citations were lower by more than a thousand, maybe closer to fifteen hundred, and, and that's where we, we were encouraging officers to avoid interactions with the public.
Right.
And, and that was to protect the officers and to protect the citizens with the pandemic, and so, you know, there was several months where we, we were not stopping as many cars as normal, we, we were not doing as many search warrants, some search warrants that we would have done in nineteen, we, we, we put off and didn't do, or, or the investigators figured out a different way to do it, and, and so, we began to see, I began to get calls on, on traffic-related things, and I think some of that's because our enforcement had went down some, but there really, there wasn't a, other than seeing some, some of a reduction in, in several things.
Which you would, would expect.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I, I was expecting to see the overdose high, but it was the same.
I, one, one of the things, when me and my captain sat down with this, I said those exact words, my perception was we've had more overdoses, but it, it was actually, I mean, almost the same, it was actually one less, but my, my perception was we were gonna have way more overdoses, but we were about consistent with where we were the year before. So, it, it, it was a strange year, but I get, because we typically try to compare year to year, because it's a little easier to look and see, but...
Yes, you have a question you'd like to ask?
I have questions.
Go ahead, please.
Did you have any change in the domestic violence statistics or abuse?
Um, the, there was actually a...
You gotta repeat the question because...
Oh, okay. For, uh, the question for, uh, folks listening, uh, was, uh, was there a change in the domestic violence, uh, numbers? Uh, I'm assuming you're asking was, was there an increase? Uh, we, we had a few more and I don't remember the numbers. Uh, the assaults, the domestic assaults were pretty consistent. Um, they weren't exact, but they were in the same range. Uh, we did have a few more domestic calls. Um, I think it was up by a hundred or a hundred and fifty. There was a number it was higher than that I probably just said a incorrect number because it's out of my brain. But there were a few more domestics, um, than the year before. But those numbers kind of fluctuate too. Uh, and really to really compare that, we would need to go back several years to see kind of where those numbers are. I think one of the perceptions, uh, with that, because we talked about that some at the department is, you know, are, as people are cooped up in houses, are the domestics going to go up? Um, and, and we may have experienced a little of that, but it wasn't as drastic as, um, I, I think people figured out how to interact at home differently. Uh, where, you know, we're so busy, uh, people's lives begin to slow down. And, uh, I heard a lot of folks talk about, you know, in one way it's kind of good because, you know, we've started having suppers as, you know, sitting down with our family again. And, you know, because everybody's not going to this ballgame or that ballgame or, or this event or this festival, you know, because all that kind of stuff kind of quit for a while. So I don't have the exact numbers, but that is a good question. Uh,
We had to learn how to get along because we were too dumb.
We did.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I lived in the basement.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for, for Chief Phelps? Anyone on the, uh, on the Zoom that would like to ask a question? Don't hear anybody. Thank you. Chief, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate the great report. We appreciate bringing this up to date on where we are. And first, let me say this, thank you for all that you've done, especially for all time, but especially this last year. We know it's been a tough, challenging time. Uh, we're still in it and we're still going, going through it. But we appreciate the way that, uh, you, our department, our officers, uh, and everyone reacted. I know it was tough dealing with a lot of issues and we do appreciate everything that was done. Training that has been done. Uh, we, again, the, the training that you were doing, uh, with diversification and all the things that are involved there, we, we appreciate. And we know it's going to be two, two, uh, good things for our community as we continue to work together. We are very blessed with a great community that works together, uh, that wants to see things go the right way, not the wrong way. And, but sometimes we have to stop and, and, and listen and learn some things and, uh, know how to deal with it. And we appreciate that you are, you, our department and all of us are willing to be a part of, of that, uh, in, in every way. So.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We will move into, uh, we don't have matters scheduled tonight for public hearings. So we'll move to our consent agenda items tonight. That's, uh, minutes of our city council meeting of Tuesday, March 16th, 2021. Item B are minutes of the budget work session of Tuesday, March 23rd. Item C are the revised minutes. So this is a approval of revised committee of the whole minutes from August the 25th of 2020, as submitted to include approval of the following section that was inadvertently, inadvertently omitted from the prior minutes, uh, intersection two A ordinance amending chapter 12 nuisances related to disease vector species, providing for severability, codification, and an effective date, uh, during that time.
Can't believe we missed that.
Me either. Item D is a change order. This is number three for the War Creek wastewater treatment plant biosolids improvements project. And this would be, uh, is recommended by McGill Associates for the War Creek wastewater treatment plant improvements project in the amount of $26,745.97. Item E is an authorizing resolution to the Bernhardt Transportation LLC. Uh, this would be a, uh, resolution authorizing lease of the city property for a term of one year to the Bernhardt Transportation LLC at a rate of 1,500 monthly, uh, or 18,000 per year. Item F is a resolution for the spring litter sweep as we presented tonight, encouraging residents to help keep, uh, Lenore litter free. And a note, this is with the full support of city council, city staff will pick up the litter in Lenore on Wednesday, April 14th, 2021, during the annual city Lenore employee spring litter sweep date. And item G is the proclamation for the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And this will be approval of April 11th through the 17th as that special week in the city of Lenore. Those are your items A through G. If there's any question, please bring that. If not, we'll need a motion to approve these items as presented.
Mayor, um, this is Todd speaking.
Yes, sir.
Given that I work for the company with, uh, respect to item D that we'll be discussing, and, uh, we do receive direct, uh, financial benefit from this change order, I would ask that item D be pulled and also ask that council consider recusing me from this, uh, vote.
Okay. We will pull item D for this, this moment. Now we'll entertain anything on items A, B, C, E, F, and G.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve A, B, C, E, F, and G as presented.
We have a motion from Councilmember Willis to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, E, F, and G as presented. No other discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
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 And on the phone?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Aye.
Thank you. And that, uh, that is unanimous with who we have here tonight for those items. Now we will, uh, look at item D. And first, I guess we will need to, uh, have a motion to recuse, uh, Councilmember, uh, Purdue from, uh, participating.
So move.
Have a motion from Councilmember Willis.
I was trying to think about the thing.
To recuse, uh, Councilmember Purdue from, uh, uh, in voting on this, uh, change order for the War Creek wastewater treatment plants. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Okay. And now we will, uh, entertain a motion for the change order number three, uh, for the approval of this War Creek wastewater treatment plant, item D. For discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I, uh, make a motion that we approve change order number three, item D as submitted.
I have a motion from Councilmember Presswood that we approve change order number three, uh, in the amount of 26,745.97 as presented for the War Creek wastewater treatment plant biosolids improvements project. No other discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. And the consent agenda, consent agenda item is complete. We'll move on then to any requests or petitions of any citizens. If there's anyone that would like to address the council here this evening, uh, we have two guests in the background who we'd love, welcome. If you'd have anything you'd like to say to the council and if you would introduce yourselves to us.
Uh, I'm Anna Evans from the NC State, um, social work major. I'm a policy and action paper for my social work class.
Well, thank you for being with us this evening. And we hope you, uh, we have had some, some items on there tonight, at least to hear about. So glad that you were, you were with us and thank you for, uh, for considering to be with us this evening. So is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time, uh, during our time of citizen participation? Okay. Hearing no one, we'll move on then. We do not have reports of our boards and commissions this evening. So we'll move on to the report and recommendations of the city manager, Mr. Hillbrand.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, counsel tonight, a couple items for information. Uh, the Lenore Tourism Development Authority will meet on Thursday, April 8th, 4:00 PM. That'll be a virtual meeting. Uh, the Lenore Business Advisory Board will meet virtually on Thursday, April 8th at 6:00 PM. Uh, the city, city county services committee will conduct a virtual meeting on Monday, April 12th at noon. Uh, the Cowal County Economic Development Commission will conduct a virtual meeting on Tuesday, April 13th at 8:00 AM. And the ABC board will meet virtually on Thursday, April 15th at 2:00 PM. Uh, also I want to remind you, your next city council meeting will be held on Monday, April 19th at 6:00 PM instead of Tuesday. Uh, that's due to the league meeting, uh, that's underway. And so at the time we set the agenda for the calendar for the year for council meetings, uh, that was scheduled to be out of town, uh, that meeting, of course, will be virtually. But again, your council meeting will be Monday, April 19th, 6:00 PM. Uh, tonight we have two items for your consideration. The first is authorizing resolution, um, for state loan grant. As you recall, last, uh, fall, you approved a resolution for us to go back and apply for funding for the Finley area water system improvements from the state. Uh, due to the lack of funding at that time, the state did not fund the project. Uh, so we'd ask you to go back and reauthorize us to go back and make an application to the state once again. I think their deadline is April, give me a second, I'll tell you. In Rafford, if you know, you may jump ahead of me, but, uh, April, end of April 21. So we need to get that approved, uh, to go back and make the application. It's estimated to be a $5.1 million project.
Okay. We heard the recommendation, uh, from the city manager and through the staff is recommending approval of the authorizing resolution to authorize the manager to file an application with State and North Carolina for a state loan and/or grant aid in the construction of the Finley area water safety system improvements project. So presented, if there's any questions or comments, not, we'll ask for a motion concerning that.
Mr. Mayor, I, uh, make a motion, we approve the action for item number one as submitted.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilmember Beal, uh, to, uh, approve the authorizing resolutions as presented. Not going to read that all to you again on that. If no other questions, I'll call for the, the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And on the phone?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. And that is approved unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Hillbrand?
Yes. Next item is order of abatement for 1921 Marigold Lane. Uh, this is parcel number ID 03-53-2-16 and also NC PIN number 2768107707, directing staff to abate the minimum housing order by demolishing the structure. Uh, you can see the photos in your packet of the, uh, condition of the structure. I know planning director Jenny Wheelock is on the call as well, can give you more details if you have those, but that house is in pretty, pretty bad shape and have no response from the owners.
All right. You've heard the recommendation from the, uh, city manager and the staff, uh, recommending approval of an order of abatement for the property located at 1921 Marigold Lane. And you see the numbers in front of you there. Is there any questions of, uh, anyone? Uh, as you said, uh, Director Wheelock is on the phone, our planning directors, that she can answer any questions if anybody has any?
No, that one, that one's bad.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I make a motion, um, we approve as presented.
I have a motion from Councilmember Willis that we approve the order of abatement for 1921 Marigold Lane as presented. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And on the phone?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Sirs? I appreciate that. And we will, uh, that is, stands approved. There's anyone opposed, by the way? And I hear no one on that. Okay. Uh, that just takes care of that. Mr. Hillbrand, anything else?
Just a reminder again of April 14th, the cleanup of the city. And Jared Wright, public works director, you want to comment on that, Mr. Wright? He's coordinating that efforts on behalf of the city. And I know they've coordinated with the NC DOT as well.
Okay.
I'm trying to get unmuted over here. Yes, I appreciate that plug. April 14th, we are finalizing our staff numbers and street lists. There's plenty of litter out there and we'll certainly appreciate any support we can get. We'll take any, any covers.
All right. We will all plan to be there, I hope, in any way if we can. I know I'm, I'm planning. I'm sure a lot of the council members are, if they can work it out and be there. I think even Commissioner Potter said he would probably be there. And we remind you that also that, uh, the county was having the same thing on April 17th. Uh, and I'm sure there will be someone coordinating that. Uh, if you want to be a part of that, you can reach out to, uh, Commissioner Potter and, and, uh, through the county office to find out about that. So we appreciate everyone being involved and, and, and wanting to, to do the best we can in cleaning up our city and county in every way we possibly can. I would mention on the, uh, council meeting of the 19th, we do plan to, uh, to have our, um, almost state champion soccer team of Highbryton will be with us, uh, at least a few of them. We, uh, certainly because of, uh, numbers, we can't have everybody on the team, but we hope our coaching staff and several other players, the captains and, uh, some others, uh, will come out so that we can, uh, recognize them and say, thank you for a, a wonderful season, undefeated, uh, all the way to the state championship game. And I understand it was a hard fought game, uh, in Cary, uh, which, uh, came close, but they were the original champions and I know the conference champions and finished 18 and one, I think for the year. And anytime you can have that kind of season, it is, uh, it's phenomenal. So we're very proud of, of Highbryton Soccer Team and, uh, and, and we're also proud of our, uh, other athletics and all going on. I know it's been tough by having athletic events during the pandemic, but, uh, so far it seems like things are moving in the, the best they can, uh, moving forward here. And maybe we'll have a football team that'll be playing for something here in the, in the near future. We'll see how, uh, how that goes as things continue. But, uh, we will be ha- having them come out on the 19th with us at the council meeting. So, all right. We'll move on then to, um, report of our, uh, city attorney, Mr. Rohr.
Nothing to report.
Glad, glad to have you back with us tonight. It's good to see your face. It's been a while. I've only seen you through Zoom, you know? So, uh, you look, you look good, by the way. Thank you. Oh, thank you.
You all look great.
Uh, we all, everybody does.
And we continue.
You look good too. Boy, I appreciate that. And, um, anyway, uh, from mayor's office, we do, I do have a couple of reappointments that I would like to present, to present to you for our board of adjustments. Uh, both are, uh, serving members who, uh, are, their time is, uh, to be reappointed is up for a three-year term on the board of adjustments. Both do a great job. We appreciate what they're doing. Dr. Jeff Church and, um, Leah Hamilton, both are serving on that and both have agreed to continue serving on our board of adjustments. And we appreciate, uh, what they're doing there. So, uh, would make that recommendation, uh, to you for them to continue that service. As you know, they are also part of our planning board and they also serve, uh, on the board of adjustments as well. Uh, it's kind of a two roles there that they, that they both serve and do a great job. We appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I would note that those terms will be July 1st, running three years.
July 1st, that's right. We're trying to get everything kind of, uh, working out on these appointments so that we don't have so many going on all the time. So we're working on some changes in that and we'll keep you posted. But, uh, that's where we are right now with these.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve those, uh, appointments of Dr. Church and Leah Hamilton to the board of adjustments.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember Presswood to approve both of these, Dr. Church and Leah Hamilton to the board of adjustments. No other discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And on the phone?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. And that is approved unanimously. Appreciate that. I will now turn it over. Any, uh, report of any recommendations of our council members that would bring up? Anything going on? Mr. Willis, anything across the, from the League of Municipalities that, uh, report?
League, we're just, we're getting ready to nominate new district, um, representative. I've been the district representative for the past four years and my time is up. So we're actually meeting this week to come up with the new, uh, member. So we're in the process of that, getting ready for city vision, which you are all aware of. And then this typical league business stuff that really doesn't pertain to what we do here.
We certainly appreciate your service on the league board of directors these last four years. You've done a, a great job. You've kept us, uh, informed and, uh, have been a part of the league leadership as well, serving on the executive committee. And I know it takes a lot of time and effort and work. And we've appreciated all that you've done there. So thank you for that. Know you'll still be involved, you know, it's because they let you off the board, doesn't mean you, 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 they'll let you out of the work, but.
I don't think they let me. Yeah. But I've, I've enjoyed it. It's a good group of people and it really, I think, when you can go out and represent the city and the county, uh, throughout the state, it makes me feel good about where we are and what types of relationships we got here with, uh, with all our municipalities and, um, our, everything. We're, we're in a good place. And so, um, I think it's important to serve on those types of committees. So if any of you guys can ever want to be a part of the league or any other ones, I definitely encourage you to do it just because it kind of gets you out of your bubble a little bit. And, and, uh, we, we, we represent our community in our town and, uh, I like doing that. So, and I know you guys do too. So.
We have enjoyed it and, uh, we are, city Lenore has been very active with the North Carolina League. And we have members who serve on the National League of Cities committees as well. So we're back, try to be active in both and keep up with what's going on. So we appreciate everyone's extra service to those things, uh, involved. And, uh, hopefully that keeps moving forward as well as West Dupont Council governments. We try to keep service going there as well to be a pro, to be a part of all of that. So. keep service going there as well to be a pro, to be a part of all of that. So anything we could do that we learned about across the state helps us here in the city of Lenore and Caldwell County. So we appreciate. Any other council members? Yes, sir?
Uh, last week, well, this week, we had a great discussion with, uh, Mr. Joshua and Jared in regards to our cleanup. That will be aired on Thursday evening at seven o'clock at, uh, Mount Pilgrim Facebook. So we ask you to tune into that Thursday evening at seven o'clock. I thought it was a great discussion. So thank you guys for taking part in Straight Talk.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir, for what you do with that. That's been a great part of our community and service, especially during this pandemic time. We've had a number of people, uh, guests on discussing a lot of a variety of things. And, uh, we appreciate you, uh, that Mount Pilgrim and Straight Talk gets that out to the community and lets people know what's going on. So thank you for that. Any other council members come before us? Anything else at all from anyone? Thank you for being with us and we stand adjourned.